Good evening. I'd like to call the City of Manassas Common Council meeting to order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we have a roll call, please?
Alderman Zalinski, Alderman Engelbert, Alderman Benner, Alderman Nichols, Alderman Taylor, Alderman Sevenek, Alderman Keon, Alderman Langdon has been excused.
We have three public hearings on the agenda tonight. The first one is a proposed preliminary resolution authorizing public improvements and levying special assessments against benefited properties. Director Radke, could you explain to the public kind of how this works and also include the deferral process and about aprons as well?
Sure. Yeah, we're here tonight to hear input on our proposed street projects, new street projects for 2015. Excuse me. We're looking at improvements in Southfield West subdivision and Nature's Way, Barker Farm Estates number six subdivision and River Lee Court. And the improvements involve a new concrete curb and gutter, asphalt pavement, storm sewer in River Lee Court. And then along with the notice went our deferred special assessment policy, which essentially says if an assessment exceeds $2,500 that there's a five-year deferral on the payment of that assessment, after which there's an additional five-year option for installment plan. So that was all sent along with the notice of hearing tonight, along with their assessments, and a brief description of what the project consisted of. Was there one other thing, Mayor?
About the aprons, if they wanted to get their apron done at the same time?
Oh, yeah. At this time, it's normal for a lot of the property owners to want to follow through with completing their driveway aprons. And we do notify the contractor that this is a possibility and likelihood that people will want to complete their aprons. In addition to that, we advise homeowners to contact other contractors because we've been finding that concrete contractors in this area tend to look for these projects and then they'll go and solicit some of this work from the property owners. And we've seen times where other contractors can actually offer a more favorable price than the contractor who is out there on our particular project. So it's just a matter of timing and the amount of work that each contractor has as to what who might give you the more favorable price.
Okay. Excuse me. At this point, if anyone from the public has questions or would like to make a comment, we invite you to come to the podium and state your name and address, and we could hopefully answer those questions.
Hi, my name's Heather Loudon. I live at 1068 Durham Lane in Southfield West. My concern is that I feel like the crude oil prices have gone down considerably since the last year, couple of months, and I don't see where we're actually getting that cost because it's my assumption that crude oil drives the price of asphalt.
Director Radke?
Yeah, I should have explained one other thing. The assessments that everyone received are preliminary assessment figures. That is based on our best estimate that comes from past projects. We, our engineering supervisor, Tim Montour, had also contacted several contractors to get an idea of what prices might be going for this year, and then we add a little bit because we do want to be conservative with these costs. So that's how we obtain the estimate for the assessments that go out. Now, having said that, it's pretty commonplace for the final bills that are sent out to be less than the assessment figures that you see here before you or that you received in the mail. The billing is based on our final quantities. It's based on the prices that we get with a competitive bid situation. This project has to be bid per state statutes, and the lowest qualified bidder is selected. And so everything is based on those prices and those quantities. Regarding the asphalt, we've seen that, from what we've seen on some projects that have already been bid and in talking with the contractors, I wouldn't say it's a great reduction in price is what is expected this year, maybe a small reduction from what we've heard so far.
So does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to comment or has a question on this project?
Dustin Loudon, 1068 Durham Lane as well. My question is, is like, I'm on a corner lot. I already have my underground pet containment in the ground, and I have a blacktop apron already. I guess the first question is, will the blacktop apron be replaced? And then will we get like a schedule of when they're going to come into our subdivision and do the work so when they dig up my apron, I'm able to take my pet containment out without them damaging it?
Okay, those are all great questions because we encounter this quite often. Regarding your asphalt driveway, if you want to maintain it asphalt and if it was, if it were put in per the city specifications when you did construct the asphalt driveway, then the city will go back most likely to the right-of-way line, about 12 or 13 feet behind the curb, and make a saw cut at that point and replace the asphalt with the specified thickness of asphalt and base, and there's no charge to you for that. Now, again, that's if the driveway apron were put in per city standards, which it would have been if you obtained an excavation permit for that work. And yes, schedule, the contractor submits a letter to all of the abutting property owners and residents, and in addition to that, the city also submits a letter to the residents which explains the process, gives you some idea of the schedule, and then notifies you about what to do with your mail, refuse collection, the barricading process, traffic control, those types of things.
Are there any other questions regarding that project? Apparently Mike reminded me you didn't answer about the pet containment, but I think that kind of went with the scheduling.
Yeah, the, we'll make sure, especially knowing now that you have that existing there, that's great for us to know because that's something that we would not know about necessarily through notifying Digger's Hotline. That's something in underground facility which would not be covered under that service. So we'll work with, our staff will work with you on that and keep you apprised of where we're at so you'll have a good amount of advance notice to relocate that if necessary.
Have another question?
I guess my issue with the pet containment is I would have to be there as they dig up my driveway because it's literally run underneath the blacktop driveway. So will I have that kind of notice when they're going to actually dig so I can be there to take it up?
Yes.
Okay.
Is there anyone else on that project? If not, we'll call the public hearing to a close and we'll move on to the second public hearing, and this is regarding the proposed rezoning of the property located immediately east of 934 Plank Road. Director Kyle, do you want to start this one out?
The zoning of this property came up as part of our annual comprehensive plan review, and not just this year and years prior. The property is currently zoned I-1. It's an industrial zoning classification. The property is non-conforming with respect to the property depth, and there are also some issues regarding the size of the parcel related to the overall I-1 zoning district. So the property is not buildable absent a variance. In my estimation, if a variance were applied for, it would be eligible for consideration inasmuch as there is no feasible use of the property absent a variance. However, our comprehensive plan calls for a different zoning classification for this property. The future land use plan designates this for C-1 general commercial zoning. And in discussions about this, both presently and in the past with the Plan Commission, it was felt that it, the property should be rezoned inasmuch as we would like to sort of, sort of improve the appearance of this gateway corridor to our community. And with the current industrial zoning there, we stand a likely prospect that if a variance were requested and granted, we would be seeing additional mini storage facilities in that location. There are some other issues with this property. There is undocumented fill that is present, and it is quite likely that some additional site work would be needed, need to be done to verify the extent, quantity, and nature of that fill prior to approvals being granted. And this approval would initially be from the Department of Natural Resources to build on a historic fill site. So there would be review at that level plus review at the city level. The C-1 zoning district allows for a fairly wide variety of commercial uses. These would include service, retail, office, any number of things that we see in our other commercial corridors. There are building standards, landscaping standards. We also have transitional area requirements for the portions of the site abutting the residential uses or zoning districts, which would require the establishment of a landscape buffer strip between any future commercial use and those residential properties. So the Plan Commission has reviewed this, and their recommendation is to proceed with rezoning this property to commercial.
Thank you, Greg. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to speak on this? Mayor?
Hi, I'm Laurie Spiegel. I live at 943 Marquette Street. My property is affected by this whole lot and the rezoning. They've tried to do this several years ago by putting big apartment complexes in there, which obviously that's not a wise choice to make our corridor apartment complex a vacant building for 20 years and more apartment complexes or multi-storage. But they can put a gas station in there, wouldn't that be great? Then it'd be right down the street from another gas station. Or how about a bar? We have enough bars right there in that little corridor, and we could just add those in there. I mean, it makes no sense to rezone this, period. I've lived in this house for 17 years. There's methane issues, it's a dumping site, the land is horrible. Mr. Radke knows, Greg knows, the mayor knows. I've had problems where there was standing water and you could see the water just bubbling with the methane issues. This land is a sore thumb. It's a whole dumping site from this land all the way over to Aida Street. But yet, we get to only charge the person $5 a year in taxes on it. But we want to make it feasible for him to sell it to get something in there. What is wrong with this picture? Where does this fall into the comprehension plan? Why aren't we looking at something else like, that would help Manassas? A park, you know, even using it for the public works right across the street. They're going to run out of land, you know, eventually. Why are we even putting this out there? I know that Mayor Don told at the last meeting that he was the one who brought it into the comprehension plan discussion, but why? Where is the agenda on that? It just doesn't make sense to, I would rather take my chances with industrial than putting commercial of any sorts in there because last time, they were all ready to give TIFs and help with tax incentives for the apartment complexes they want to put in there and everything. So do I trust that you're not going to say, well, here, we'll give you some extra money to put a bar in there, quick trip comes in months, put a gas station there, you know, we'll give you some incentives? Why aren't we using incentives and using it as something, you know, that would bring people to the city and keep people in the city instead of running them out?
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this topic? And we'll discuss that further out in the agenda.
Mayor, I guess her question kind of didn't get answered. She wanted to know why this came about? Why is this all of a sudden become an issue? I'd like to know that. You know, she's absolutely right in the things she's spoken on, you know, it's industrial, it did have contamination. All of a sudden now, you want to change it commercial unless you've got some project in the wings, you know, I'd like to know about it.
Well, as I mentioned, this did not come up out of the blue. We've discussed this at the Plan Commission, I think, several times since our comprehensive plan was adopted in 2008. We have a piece of property that's sitting there. It is distressed. It has virtually no taxable value to the community in the current condition that it's in. It can't be used for anything absent going to the Board of Appeals and obtaining a variance. And so the property is serving no productive use for the community. And I think our goal here by rezoning it is to open the window to enable it to be a plan to come forward and to be suggested for a productive use. And it's quite likely that in order to make this thing viable, you know, the owner or a prospective purchaser would need to come forward, and perhaps there would be a request for some sort of grant assistance to do the site exploration, to prepare a plan and come forward with something that would bring this, this site into something that would be productive. And as I mentioned, with this current industrial usage, it could very well be that a variance could be granted. And if you, if you recall, there were site issues on the property across the street, what was the old Wimpy's Auto Sales and so forth? There was undocumented fill there. Application was made to the DNR. Certain things were done. I think there was some methane venting and so forth, and voila, they were granted a permit to construct there. So it's, it is, I think, conceivable that if we continue this as being an industrial use, we're going to end up in something in that corridor that is less than the aesthetic that I think we would be wanting for that location.
Is there methane? Is it okay? Is there methane venting going on now because I see all these pipes out there?
Those, I believe, were test wells. There was sampling going on. And as Ms. Spiegel mentioned, there was a proposal for a development some time ago that did not sort of progress to any level, in part due to the soil conditions, not so much on that site, but elsewhere. There would need to be, as I mentioned, additional sampling done to determine what kinds of environmental hazards are present there, and then out of that would flow a plan how to manage that.
Mayor, can I ask one more quick question about the taxes? Because I can't believe that that's correct about the $5. Because I own about that much land up north, it just sits there, and it's a smaller school district, and I pay 1,000 times more.
Well, I don't know, I don't know the numbers, but I do believe that it's very low, what it's taxed at because, again, of the distressed condition of the property.
She says she's got it right behind her, so.
Yeah, I don't dispute that, but.
How can there be a property that size in the community at that rate? It doesn't make sense. Even personal property, you pay more than that.
Yeah.
Just having a couch in my office.
Well, all I can say is it's distressed, and that would be the call of the assessor as far as its value.
The multi-storage units that we're talking about right across the street, those are taxed at $829,000, just so everybody's aware of it. And that's the same kind of dumping site that we have here, but yet we're still $5.24. My house is built on this dumping site. I'd like to know why I don't get to pay $5.24. And again, this is nothing against, you know, Mr. Gauz, but it just doesn't seem right that I have the same crap-hole dumping site and I don't get the tax benefits. But opening this up for him and getting different sorts of zoning and buildings that can come in there is opening a can of worms, and we're saying, here you go, let's reward you for buying a dumping site for a dollar. You know, I originally had talked about maybe even like a dog park, something like that, you know, it's three acres. The city used to be able to put their fence there, there's no fence there, and that was the reward. They would plot, or they would cut the lawn when old man Alrich had it. But then when Gauz took it over, it started getting distressed because he's up there in age, and he only does that cutting three times a year, and I can tell you all three times he does it.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who has comments on this subject? If not, we'll call this public hearing to a close, and we'll go on to item three, which is a public hearing regarding the proposed rezoning of the property located on the west side of the 600 block of Racine Street, including parcels number 10051300 and 10051400. Greg, did you want to comment on this one as well?
Yes, this is also being addressed as part of our comprehensive plan update. We became aware of the plans by the Boys and Girls Club to extend their footprint into the two adjoining parcels to the north. What's proposed for that is a parking lot that would be adjacent to the Boys and Girls Club facility, and then a biofilter that would abut the residential properties on the north. The facilities like the Boys and Girls Club, although the area is designated for residential use in the comprehensive plan, facilities that support residential neighborhood are suggested as allowable in those, adjacent to those areas. So given the function that, that property, the Boys and Girls Club will serve, and the need to have the supporting parking there, the Plan Commission viewed this and is recommending that the two parcels be rezoned from R1 Single Family to C1 General Commercial.
So at this point, does anyone from the public have comments on this proposed rezoning? Seeing no one, we'll call the public hearing to a close, and we'll move to item E, which is public comments on any matter of concern to the city. This is your chance, if you would like to comment on something else on the agenda or not on the agenda, you're welcome to come to the podium at this point and give your comments to the Common Council. Does anyone have any items they would wish to comment on at this point?
I would like to comment on the parking on Elm Street. I live, I'm Juanita Parsons, 338 Elm Street, Manassas. We've been residents there almost 50 years. Now, I don't know how it is on the ends of the street, but we're sort of in the middle, and our lots are very narrow, and our driveways are close together. And when people park on the other side consistently and don't move their cars, hardly ever, we have a hard time even getting out of our driveway. And people can be very careless and just use our street as a, almost a permanent parking lot. It can be lined up for ever so many houses with cars. And there hasn't been any problems so far since the trial has been in place, but summers are really bad. Last summer, we had a man that had a boat on his trailer hooked to a truck, and he was out there for like eight days, and I was just about to call the police department that it had been out there so long, and he moved it then, so. But, you know, that's just an example of things that do happen. And once, we had a motor home adjacent to our house for a while, and I don't know what all the ordinances are on things like that, but I just don't want people to be able to park there to their heart's content. I think there needs to be restrictions, so please keep that in mind.
Thank you, Mrs. Parsons. Is there anyone else?
My last thing is, why are we making a comprehensive, comprehensive plan about certain things that, really are they affecting our city? Instead of cleaning up our city, keeping homeowners here instead of turning it into a huge rental rate? I am a real estate agent, and Manassas is one of the hardest sells for me because of tax rate, because of rental rates, all of that. Why are we not focusing on giving some sort of incentives to homeowners? Having these homeowners clean this stuff up, getting rid of, you know, the bad things that are going on here? You know, a few months ago, I was at McDonald's in the drive-thru, and some guy comes from the house next door waving a sword, and another guy's come, and, you know, they have knives and things like that. This is at McDonald's when you're in the drive-thru. These are things we need to worry about, not vacant land.
Thank you, Mrs. Spiegel. Is there anyone else? Seeing no one, we'll move on to the report of department head, staff, and consultants. We have the minutes and communications to receive this evening. Do we have a motion? Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to receive and put on file minutes A through I and Communications J through L.
So motion and a second. Is there any discussion on any of the items on the agenda? Alderman Sevenek?
Earlier, Greg had mentioned that they've been discussing this for some time in the Planning Commission and that, about this particular lot, but that was one of the, when I read the minutes, that was a question one of the board members asked, is why was this being brought up? And there was no answer in the minutes. So that's why I asked the question today, you know, it didn't help me. And, you know, I'm kind of torn on this issue. I have a feeling that we're trying to do what's right by developing the property, which is probably what we need to do, and that, of course, that can't happen unless it gets cleaned, and we want that to happen too. So I guess if we did move forward with rezoning it, we could get the property cleaned, and I think that's what I would like to see happen first. Because right now, like she had stated, I mean, that property's been sitting there forever, and I was on the council when they talked about those, that other development, and I wasn't in favor of that at all at that point. So, but of course, like Greg said, that fell through anyways because it's just, it's too expensive to clean up, so.
But it was only on a seven-year study from the DNR, and that seven years is up.
Mayor?
That was the problem.
So Greg, that's why I asked that question because there was, the answer was not there for me in the minutes.
Is there any other discussion on the minutes and communications? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. The consent agenda has 11 items this evening. I guess I have to read them all, huh? The minutes to approve from the Common Council from February 2nd. The Board of Public Works recommendations for the recommendation to award the 2015 Waterman Reconstruction Projects to Donald Hipps and Sons for $618,358.50, and it's a Manassas Utilities Project. The Park and Recreation Board recommending that we, recommendations from January 12th, the recommendation to revise the current park fee policy for nonprofit groups to coincide with the current special event fee policy. And the Park and Recreation Board recommendations from February 9th for the renewal of the reciprocity agreements with the Town of Manassas and City of Appleton for 2015 and 16, and to extend the Jefferson Park curfew on July 4th from 11:00 to 11:30 p.m. to aid in traffic congestion following the fireworks show. The Personnel Committee recommendations from February 2nd to authorize the creation of one additional lead person position in the Parks, Foresteries, Facilities, and Cemetery Division, aiding, adding it to the table of organization without increasing the number of employees in the division with the recommended pay range. The recommendation- division with the recommended pay range. The recommendation to the proposed changes to the Personnel Policy Handbook overtime policy is submitted. And the Plan Commission recommendations from February 3rd for the rezoning of the property located on the west side of the 600 block of Racine Street, from Single Family Residential District to General Commercial District. And the rezoning of the property located immediately east of 934 Plank Road, from I-1 Heavy Industrial District to C1, General Commercial District. And the proposed amendments to Section 13167 pertaining to electronic message center signage, and the extraterritorial certified survey map at Racine Road and Century Oaks Drive in the Town of Manassia. Does anyone have items that they wish to have separated this evening? Alderman, Sevigny.
Thank you, Mayor. Item three, the revising the current park fee policy for nonprofit groups. And also, out of courtesy of the individual who took the time to come to the council meeting to view our opinions. Item nine, the rezoning of the property at 934 Plank Road.
Alderman Engelbert?
I'd like to separate number seven, the changes to the overtime policy.
Alderman Zalinski?
Item number five.
Are you going to have any left?
Oh, yeah.
Any other ones, Stan? Anyone else?
Seven and what?
Seven, five, and nine, and three, yes.
Are you kidding me?
All the odds. Well, you might as well do one on 11, too.
Yeah, I did three.
Anyone else? Do we have a motion for the remaining items? Alderman, better?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve consent agenda items 1, 2, 4, 6, 8, 10, and 11.
There's a motion and a second. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 7-0.
Did you break something? Okay, so item number three was revising the current park fee policy for nonprofits. Do we have a motion? Alderman, Sevigny?
Mayor, at this time, I would like to offer some possible amendments, and I'm not prepared to do that yet this evening. And I was wondering if it were to be all right with Brian, if I could just hold this for two weeks, and I could bring those forward for the next meeting.
Do we have a second?
Second.
So motion and a second to hold that items. We'll place that on the next general.
Thank you.
Agenda. Item five is extending the curfew for Jefferson Park on July 4th. Do we have a motion? Do you have a motion, Stan, or?
That wasn't mine.
We have your light on yet, so.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Dan?
I'll make a motion to extend the Jefferson Park curfew on July 4th, 2015, from 11:00 p.m. to 11:30 to aid in traffic congestion following the fireworks.
Is there a second?
Seven.
So motion and a second. Danny, do you have?
And I'd like to ask the police chief how this is going to alleviate any problems there. And are you in favor of this?
First question, I guess we don't know 100%, but this is what sort of happened when we had the fireworks show with Seafood Fest, because it obviously gets darker earlier in September. There was a fair amount of time after the fireworks show ended where some people stayed in the park and listened to the band and hung out for a while longer. So the concept that the park director and I came up with was to try to allow for that same type of diffusing process, I guess. When the fireworks show traditionally is over on the Fourth of July, it's the mass exodus out of the park. While we still expect the majority of people will leave at that point, if we could stagger that, that exit, that would in theory help with the crowds and the traffic. So, the memo that I included said, sure, we'd give it a shot for a year, and if that helps, you know, then we can look at it for subsequent years. But it's certainly, on a smaller scale, we estimate the crowd was probably about 65% to 75% of what normally would be on the Fourth of July for Seafood Fest. So, until we see it large scale, I guess we won't know. But certainly worth a try, because as everyone knows, traffic and everything after the Fourth is a little tedious.
Was there any discussion of just letting the band play on, the beer sales stopping, much like they do at Packer games and baseball games?
That would be a decision more up to the park director and the event holder, I guess.
Okay. Did they discuss, Brian, did they have any discussion with that, to let it, let it ease down before they hit the road?
Yeah, no, I think the general plan was just to sort of bump everything 30 minutes later. You know, the band and, band and beer would be done at 11, and then they'd be out of the park by 11:30.
What are the noise ordinances in the city currently with, because we were told years ago to end it at 10:30 to wind up the noise, and so the residents can get some sleep. And not everybody is working the same shift. I know they, they hope they have the Fourth of July off, but the next day they're back at work. And sometimes this lands in the middle of the week. And we're going to be getting complaints that the party goes on longer, and it's going to affect the neighborhood. Is there any discussion about that?
Well, the normal park curfew is 11, so the music would be off at 11. The normal park policy, which isn't in the ordinance, said the music was always, is always a 10:30 stoppage, and then you're out of the park by 11. So it did come up at the park board meeting, and I guess they felt like 30 minutes, you know, wasn't a, you know, a huge imposition.
So now they'll be out of the park by 12?
Well, it's supposed to be out by 11:30. Yeah, the MAC, the folks, they said they, you know, 30 minutes, and they're, they're telling us they're out of there.
Oh, I don't think I can support this at this time, just for the effect that it has on the neighborhood. Most of the people are visiting from out of town, so they don't really care. Because that park isn't all full of this Manassia people, because we have these Fourth of July things staggered. And I think this has an effect on the neighborhood. I can't support this at this time.
Is there other discussion? Seeing none, do, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 5-2.
Item seven is the proposed changes to the Personnel Policy Handbook on overtime. Alderman Engelbert?
Yeah, if you recall at our last meeting, in committee meeting, we, we approved sending to the council revised overtime policy. And since we acted on that, they found two other departments that could possibly be impacted, and that one being the engineering staff, if they got called in on a water main break. And the other would be in, I believe, the Health Department, if they had an emergency fire or something, a disaster on a Sunday where a nurse was called in. So, in talking with Director Stino, we have a couple of options here. We can, we can approve an amended policy, or we could bring it back through committee. And I guess my recommendation would be that we would just pass the amended policy to include those two. The financial impact is negligible, may happen once or twice a year. So financially, there's virtually no impact. So, but I thought I would leave it to the council to decide whether they wanted to act on it, on an amended policy, or, I'm seeing some heads nodding. All right, so with that, I would move to approve the amended changes to the Personnel Policy Handbook regarding overtime, as was included in your packet.
What's the motion made first?
That's what he just made. So, he just made the motion as amended. I was just talking to the attorney, and she said, we could probably do it either way.
A second.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second for the, the policy as amended that was included in your packet.
Yes, it would read all full-time employees, instead of specifically municipal operations employees.
Okay. Is there discussion on this item? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 7-0.
And item nine is the rezoning of the property at 934 Plank Road. But what this item does is it just accepts the Plan Commission's recommendation, the actual rezoning would take down, take place down in ordinances and resolutions. So we don't necessarily need to take action on this, or we can, but we'd still take action, again, down below. So the council's pleasure at this point. Take it up down below, then. Okay. Item I is action items. The first item is the accounts payable and payroll for February 5th through 12th. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll move to approve the accounts payable and payroll for the term of 2/5/15 to 2/12/15, in the amount of $1,62,354.80.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Becky, did you? Okay. Anyone else? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 7-0.
Item two is the beverage operators license applications for 2013 through 15. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll move to approve the beverage operators license applications for the 2013 through 2015 licensing period as listed on the Police Department memo dated February 11, 2015.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 7-0.
Item three is a Class B liquor license application for 5 o'clock somewhere. RD LLC doing business as 5 o'clock somewhere, 600 Broad Street, Manassia. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll move to approve the Class B liquor license application for 5 o'clock somewhere, LLC doing business as 5 o'clock somewhere, 600 Broad Street, Manassia.
There's a motion and a second. Is there discussion? Alderman Zalinski?
Thank you. My question is for Pam. If we would deny this tonight, would, is there any repercussions from that? Because I am concerned, I'm the alderman from that district, and that place is really starting to look pretty rough. And it's starting to affect that whole neighborhood. I'm not blaming this administration, but there is a lot of balls dropped on that stretch of that street that is affecting that neighborhood. And I just see it coming down the street and growing like a cancer. And I'm afraid that if we don't take a stand somewhere, I hate to see what Broad Street's going to look like.
You'd be identifying, I guess, the reason for the denial.
Because the place looks like crap.
But right now, there's, I mean, you'd have to go through the motion, there's a motion on the floor, so.
Yes. I would, well, I'm going to be voting no, but I don't know about the rest of them, if it would get denied. Is there any?
So your question is, is appearance a valid reason to deny a liquor license?
Well, I don't know what other, I don't know what other problems with the building there are out there. Because if it looks like that outside, what is, what is the inside like? I've had complaints from the residents in that area for the way the place looks, and the noise, and, but, I don't know. What do you do?
Do, go ahead.
Well, I, I guess the question would be to the Fire Department, Health Department, and Building Inspectors that have inspected the property and have indicated no reason to hold up the liquor license approval. That wasn't anything that I was a part of. So it would be a question, I guess, to those various entities.
And then my next question would be Community Development. Is there any code violations on the outside of this building?
I did ask the building inspectors to evaluate things. The appearance, I mean, I certainly agree with you. It's problematic. There's awnings that are extremely faded, tattered. There's some temporary signs. Those are in violation of our sign code. So we can address those banners that have been there for far too long, and those can be removed. The parking lot is not paved. And as you know, in 2011, an ordinance was adopted such that when a commercial property, the ownership of a commercial property changes, then they are required to pave the parking lot within nine months. In this instance, there's a lease arrangement, so the property isn't, the ownership isn't transferring, so we can't compel them to pave the parking lot. We can certainly address the signage that is non-compliant, and we can request. The awning isn't a structural matter, it's an aesthetic matter. So, and, and we can ask that the awning be removed, or that the fabric covering the awning be replaced. But I don't know that there's any code that we can point to that would require that.
And the side porch, I called two years ago, it was a sheet of blandex that was put up on the side to create a temporary smoking area, and nothing was taken care of on that either. And the neighbor complained about it, and me being the alderman brought it forward to the community development, and nothing happened. Is that legal?
Is it legal? I don't know if I can answer that question. It was, we've had any number of buildings where there were attachments placed to the structure to deal with the smoking ban. But it's, I don't believe it was a structural matter. Again, it's an appearance item.
Well, it's an appearance item, and that's my concern, is this neighborhood's really starting to look rough. And if we don't take a stand somewhere, I don't know where it's going to end. It's starting to creep down my street, and that's starting to concern me.
Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree, the only time we seem to have teeth up here is when we hold a license in. My, my district is across the street, and I've had complaints on this property, too. As Greg said, there's signage issues, there's multiple signage, signage problems with the property. The awning is shredded, it's hanging there. It's a, it's a terrible image for our city. And I think respectable business owners would want to bring this up to an aesthetic, and up to our codes. What happens there, too, is I think it's something we'll have to deal with, with this smoking ban. You get six, eight people standing out front there, and there's a bar across the street. You get six, eight people standing out there, and they're talking back and forth. And you have people living across the street, and their bedrooms are sleeping areas right there in front of these. And they're bothered till 2, 3 in the morning with, with these issues. And I don't quite know how we get a handle on that. But if there was a smoking area that was designated for this, on the other side of the building, that would help the situation. But I'm not in favor of approving this at all until this property, inside and outside, is brought up to the proper codes. And I think the owner would have to have respect for their community to do this. And I would respect them much more if, if they did meet our, our zoning codes before approving this license. So I would like to see this license either held, or motion removed, or
Conditions.
Or conditions be put on this. It's a, it's a serious problem, and it's on our, our friendship trail. A lot of people use this riding their bikes, joggers. So it is an area that a lot of the public does, does see this, especially going to Jefferson Park. So I would like to see this completely brought up to our codes before any license is issued.
It appears that you're the potential renter.
Yep, I am.
Hold on just a second, though. Is there unanimous consent to hear from?
I'll move for unanimous consent.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, okay. I'm Rebecca Durant, and I'm leasing it out. About the awnings, we're taking them all down. We're putting up a new awning right on the front. So it is a terrible eyesore. We are putting in new flooring, we're redoing all the walls, we're getting everything up to code with, after talking with the building inspector and stuff on the inside. We are definitely looking at making it more appealing to the eye, and making it better for that community and that neighborhood. Not that it's the eyesore of the whole town. We're sticking quite a big amount of money in fixing that property. We're sticking quite a big amount of money in fixing that property up and making it look good.
Director Kyle, do they need a permit for the awning, or is there a process? I mean, can they put up a pink awning or a fluorescent orange awning, or is there some discretion on that?
In... That's in C-1 district, so we do not have any review authority over colors. If there's...
How about style or over the sidewalk area?
If it's placed over the right away, the public sidewalk, then they would have to get a temporary occupancy permit from the Public Works Director. If there is signage on the awning, that would require a permit, but that permit would be mostly restricted to the amount or the area of the signage, not the style of the signage per se.
What about the nonconforming signage?
The signage that's nonconforming, the... Those banners, those just have to go. The other signage, one, the wall side on the east side, I believe to be compliant. I need to verify whether the one on the north side of the building is placed too high. It could be that it's placed too high, but I haven't determined that as of yet.
What about the parking lot being paved?
That, as I mentioned, we can't require that because the property isn't transferring ownership, and the ordinance, as it pertains to commercial and industrial and multifamily properties after the year 2011, when there is a change of ownership, then the parking areas need to be paved within nine months of that transfer.
Okay. I would certainly like to see this tabled until the proper repairs are done and it is approved by the Community Development Department, since there seems to be quite a few not conforming issues here.
Is that a motion, Alderman Taylor?
Pardon me?
Would you like to make a motion to table or...
I'll make a motion to table this until all the requirements through the Building Inspector or Community Development Department are met.
Can't do that. Can't. There's no debate. I'm out of order.
Hold on. You can make a motion to table, but that condition can't be applied, but...
Right. So that's why I'm saying, why table it, because you...
Well, we'll let the motion to table stand, and we'll take a roll call vote on that then at this time.
Yes.
Yes, it was. So the motion...
Was it the table?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Motion fails on roll call 2-5.
Jim, did you have some other questions as well? You can go next, Dan. I'm not sure... I saw Jim's on before, so...
Yeah, and I'm happy to hear that you're willing to invest in it. Do you have a plan to lease to own?
Actually, yep.
Or are you just taking a chance and putting a lot of money into it, hoping everything works out?
We have hopes to own it in the next three years. That is our plan, and obviously, after talking to him, I knew that we would have to repave the parking lot if we did purchase it. That is in our plans.
And do you have an estimate on when you're ready... When you're planning on opening up?
April 3rd.
April 3rd, so you're going to spend about the next six weeks.
We've... Between the paint and the flooring, that's getting done in the next week, and then hopefully I have my sign... We're taking down the illegal banners on the side of the building, and I'm not quite even sure if we're going to put any signs on that backside. Just the one on the side of the building is what we're going to keep and just redo, and so that wouldn't even be an issue. Also, I forgot to mention about that smoking area. I was just looking at that yesterday, and I was planning on taking that down because it is quite an eyesore, and I have no problem working with you guys on finding a way to keep the patrons away from the front of the building so they aren't as loud for the other homes around the area. You know, I have no issues. I would work with my customers and just tell them to have general respect for that.
Did you have a plan for the color of the awning and the signage yet?
It's pretty much going to be like a beige.
Okay.
It's pretty much just going to kind of match with the building.
Sure. I just know some people had questions about that. Sorry to interrupt you.
All right. I was wondering what color it was going to be.
It looks like you like beige, so...
If we approve this, and this is a question for Debbie, the City Attorney, if we approve this, do they have to come back and ask for... And renew their license in July?
Yes, because this is only for the 14, 15 licensing year, which expires on July 3rd...
So rather than holding it, I guess I would conditionally make a... Would like to see us approve it on condition that all of the improvements are done before they open up, and we can do that with us, knowing that if there's an issue with that come July, we don't have to renew the thing if they're not meeting our... You know, if things haven't worked out. So I guess I would propose to make a motion to approve this on the condition that all of the improvements are... That's just... Oh, do you? Okay.
Do you do it on what July?
No.
Who'd get a kick out of July?
Well, then, I'm fine with just approving it, and if it doesn't work out by 1st of July, then we can deal with it then.
Alderman Savick?
I kind of wanted to just echo what Alderman Engelbert said. You know, first of all, let's give kudos to both Alderman Taylor and Zalinski. They bring up some good points, because maybe had they not brought this up, these issues wouldn't be addressed. I have a personal feeling that I think they're going to be addressed. And again, Alderman Engelbert brings up a good point. This can come back to us in July, and obviously, if we're not happy, you know, we're going to take a different position. Being a business owner, it's... Especially in your situation, you're basically renting the building. We've had people... We've had very good businesses in Manassia rent, but it's the owner that held them up, and they lost their business. And, you know, this is different. We should address the property owner and not the business that wants to come into this community and, you know, provide a, you know, a nice business. And I'm willing to vote in favor of this. I would rather see a business in there than another empty building. You know, if we don't get someone in there within a certain period of time, they sit forever, so I think we should move forward.
Alderman Taylor?
I don't know how we can approve a license when there's not conforming issues here. This... I haven't seen anything in writing that said, you know, these are the not conforming issues from the Building Department, and are these going to be met before the license is issued? We hear a lot of things that people are going to do, but do they do them? It's not only the patrons that are out front. There's residential homes on three sides of this building, so pretty much wherever you stand outside, you're affecting somebody's home, and it's become an issue. It wasn't an issue when there was smoking inside these places, but now the gathering goes outside, and, you know, people get loud summertime. They're out there for quite a while, so it's something that's an issue with this type of business now that there's a change in it. I would like to see all these conditions met before the license is approved. I understand that July would be a good time, too, when we reapprove this license if... But I would like this group to work with the Community Development Department and make sure that all the zoning codes are met, and there was no other... Was a building inspection done, Greg, throughout the building?
The commercial building inspector was through, and I believe he gave his report to the clerk, correct?
Yes, he did.
And there was no...
He just... When he gives his report, he just says either they're in compliance based on our ordinance or they're not, and he's kind of limited on, you know... He doesn't get specifics with me, but it has to do with liquor license, so he said he signed off on it.
Okay. As what Alderman Savick said, sometimes it's not the tenants that are coming, and it's the owners. And there are some issues with the upstairs on this building and with the windows and things, too, how this looks to the public, and you have homeowners that are putting... Making their property look good in the neighborhood and put some large investments in their homes in that neighborhood. So I would hope that the commercial businesses can also become a good neighbor, and I'm going to vote against this at this time for all these reasons that should have been taken care of before we get to this point.
Alderman Savick?
Mayor, tonight, we are approving a liquor license and not a building code or building rezoning or something like that, and that's different, and I appreciate and I agree with your assumptions, but the Police Department did a background check from the report that was in our packet, and they had no objection. The Fire Department did an inspection, the Health Department, the Building Inspector, they have all inspected the property and have no reason to hold up the liquor license approval. All of the financial obligations to the city are also current. To me, that's what you make your decision on, and I will move to approve this and hope that the issues that you're concerned with are addressed. I think you've made a very good point, along with Alderman Zalinski, and, you know, sometimes this is the avenue to take when you get no results, and, you know, this is being aired on TV. I'm sure that property owner isn't going to be very happy, and maybe he's going to be... Need to be a little more compliant also.
Alderman Zalinski?
Thank you. Greg, how long did you know of ordinance violations on this building? Since we have a list of them now, and I haven't seen this building change in the last five years.
I was by the building recently, and I noticed the signs were still there. I don't recall the last time I, you know, looked at it prior to that.
I wish I could move this building in everybody else's district so they could see what goes on with this building. The Alderman that stands in this district has no say, basically has his one vote, and there's been ordinance violations on this building for years and years, and now we're just... We're bringing it up now, and now we're trying to get answers, but there was no enforcement.
Alderman Taylor?
I don't like the fact that we don't have enough ordinances to help keep these buildings in compliance. The shredded awning out front looks... I mean, it's been there for months and months, and graffiti on the front of the building, and it's just... I mean, this is not one of our corridors to one of our largest city parks and the Friendship Trail, and this is what we want people to think that we're all about. We've had other terrible not conformance issues in that neighborhood to start with, and this is... It just, as Alderman Zalinski said, it just keeps... It's the broken window effect. You get a broken window here, you get one here, you get one here, and it just gets a ripple effect down. There's other residents in that neighborhood that... It's just something needs to be addressed here, and I don't like holding up anybody's license to move forward with their business, but certainly, maybe it needs to fall on the building owner, but who knows what he's going to do with it? And so when some of the signage comes down, there's going to be a difference in paint, and the paint isn't going to look good on the building, so, you know, it's the... It's not just one issue, it's the whole effect, and that's what I have a problem with. I certainly hope... These are fine business people, and I certainly wish them well, and I hope they can address these issues that are a concern to this body and to the two Aldermen that share this district, and I wish them well and a lot of success. Thank you.
Alderman Engelbert?
I would guess that there's a significant number of buildings in the city that would fall in the same category that aesthetically have a lot of issues with windows, doors, roofs, driveways, junk, whatever it happens to be. So we're talking... Happen to be talking about this property, but I think every Alderman sitting up here has properties like that in their district. I know I have several houses I've been working with abandoned, falling apart, sinking in the ground. I mean, with, you know... And it would be nice if we had some magic wonder and ordinance that could make everybody invest tons of money in their buildings to fix them up, but I don't think we have that. In this particular case, I guess I'm looking at it from the point of view that we have a motivated person who wants to fix the place up, and I'm willing to give her that opportunity. I think the downside here is if she walks away from this, then we have another empty building. It's not going to get better. It's just going to get worse. If it's abandoned and it sits there, we've had how many buildings just sitting there for years not being kept up or taken care of? I guess I'd err to the side of this young lady who seems pretty motivated to fix the place up. Give her an opportunity to do that. We have a chance to revisit it just a couple of months down the road. If it was nine or 10 months from now, that might be a little... You know, it might be a little far out, but four months from now, if she hasn't been able to do what she likes to do or wants to do, we have another additional opportunity, so I think we ought to let her get to work.
Don't get me wrong on here, this isn't about her. This is about every one of us sitting up here. We've dropped the ball on many of buildings. We're all to blame.
Assistant Director, did you want to comment once more? You've been kind of back and forth a couple times.
Um, there's just a couple things. The positive side is our hours of operation are from like 11:00 a.m. and only until midnight, so people being outside of our building after midnight is not happening, so that kind of helps with the community. We don't want to stay open past midnight because of the community. I don't think that it's smart business practice for bars because nothing really good happens after midnight. The broken windows upstairs... My husband works in construction. He's done... He's been an electrician for years, and now for the past 10 years, he's worked for the Oshkosh Housing Authority, and they build low-income housing. There's some that they're actually working on in Manassia right now. So any issues that need to be addressed, like the broken windows upstairs, I mean, these are all plans that we had to have fixed before opening on April 3rd because we don't want it to look like crap, and especially first impressions for our customers are our main thought here. So I really think that you're going to be surprised and happy about how it will turn out, so...
Thank you so much for coming this evening and commenting for us. Anyone else? Otherwise, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 7-2. Thank you. 5-2. It's 7. Thank you.
Thank you again. Item J is ordinances and resolutions. Ordinance 115 is an ordinance allowing overnight parking on the west side of Elm Street. This item has only been on the agenda once, so unless someone would like to suspend the rules, we would allow this to remain on the agenda. rules, we would allow this to remain on the agenda for the next meeting. Seeing no one, we'll move on to item two, which is ordinance two relating to the rezoning of the two home, two parcels on Racine Street. Is there a motion on that? I'm going to let someone else read it. No, no motions. Oh, Alderman Engelbert?
Um, I'll move for the approval of ordinance zero dash two dash fifteen, amending title number thirteen by making certain changes to the district. Racine Street Parcels number one, zero zero five one three dash zero zero and parcel number one, zero zero five one four dash zero zero.
Is a motion a second discussion? Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know if the question's for you or Greg, but, uh, did these two parcels come in kind of after the fact or?
They did. Yes, this was the house that was demolished later than the others and then the lot next to that.
Okay.
So the, it was after the fact when we approved the original plans.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yes.
Alderman Zelensky?
Thank you. Greg, was there any discussion about doing the whole block because there's not much left?
Um, was there any discussion? I didn't think associated with this, but, um, you know, we. I'm sorry. Prior to the Boys and Girls Club, um, coming about as a potential project, uh, the planning commission had fairly extensive discussion about, well, what do we do with what was the Wanzerski property? That was zoned commercial. How does it fit in with the rest of the neighborhood? And there's, as you go, uh, south from Sixth Street toward Third Street, there's kind of a checkerboard pattern of commercial and residential zoning. We have some industrial and we had a fair amount of discussion about, okay, what should we do with this? And we really didn't come to a conclusion other than, um, we didn't want to take some action that would have unintended adverse consequences. And so I think it's still an open question with regard to the, you know, the west side of the Racine Street corridor, you know, what, what that, uh, land use and zoning lot to be for the future.
Was there any discussion, what's on the other side, on the other side of the Boys and Girls Club, why wasn't the parking put over there? Or there were?
There is, there is parking on the south of the Boys and Girls Club building. There is a, uh, basketball court on, just to the west of the Boys and Girls Club building.
Okay, there was no discussion of putting the parking further down that side?
Well, I don't think there was enough room to accommodate their, their parking, uh, going that way.
Okay. Cause I heard this discussion before, we don't want any parking lots on the main corridor and now all of a sudden we're approving parking on the main corridor. So this comprehensive plan is nice in theory, but it just doesn't seem to work. Every time we come up here, there's an amendment to it.
Well, if we're, you know, the parking lot on the commercial corridor, this was, this parking is in conjunction with a, a use and a structure and that parking is necessary to support it. We also, uh, have requirements for, um, landscaping. There's a eight, required eight-foot, uh, strip that needs to be planted to screen the cars. And we also have the transitional area planting that's required between this commercial use and the residential property. So it's, it's not going to be, uh, scenario where we have parking right up to the street. If, if the instance that you're referring to is the Racine Street lots, that was a, a scenario wherein they were proposing parking, but there wasn't any building that was sort of coming along with that. And I think that's what was the hesitancy there.
Yes, sir, it's going to be a road soon. But any, um, what kind of sound barrier, do they put up a fence or something so some of the neighbors don't have to listen to slamming doors all night or? That would be my concern. If I lived right next door to there, it would be the doors slamming. Yet, I don't know what the hours of the Boys and Girls Club are. Some nights it's running late, some nights it ends early.
Yeah, I, I don't know their hours. The, um, as I mentioned, this site on the north side, they're having this biofilter area, so there's a decent separation. I, I don't recall the dimensions offhand, but there's a decent separation there. And then there would be some, some lesser separation to the west.
So is there a fence?
They are proposing a fence. Um, I believe it's just chain link though.
But that's another problem. I have a property where you got nothing but lights shining in your, your windows and...
Well, there won't be lights shining in your windows because of our, we, we do require that the light be maintained on the property.
On the cars too?
On the property.
Yeah, but what about the cars that are coming and going? This is going to be a parking lot.
That's, yes, there will be that.
There will be that, but is there any, nothing, anything to block the light from shining in their windows?
Just, well.
A chain link fence?
The plant, the, which side are?
Director Kyle, did we approve the site plan yet for?
No.
Okay.
Okay, that will be coming up?
And that is required. A berm is required.
No, a berm is not required, but landscaping is required. Yes.
Well, just keep that in consideration for the neighbors about a fencing in there for sound and for light from cars.
A screen, but a screen is required.
I don't know. Can't keep track of it all. Thank you.
You're our planning commission rep though, Dan. Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And the last, uh, six months, we've seen Racine Street kind of go from a, a residential street to somewhat of a commercial street with, uh, the loss of the housing on the, um, 700 block of, uh, of Racine Street on the west side and, uh, with the, uh, uh, expansion and, uh, the loss of the housing for the Boys and Girls Club, which are both good things that have taken place here. How do we address the utility pulls on that west side to, to give it more of, I think, of, um, of a better, lower feel in our community?
We're way beyond.
Major corridor with, uh, and hopefully this'll just start making Racine Street from, uh, the railroad tracks north even more of a commercial corridor for us too. So how do we, is it, is that something we could look at or?
We're, we're way beyond zoning at this point. We could, we can put it on the utility commission agenda. If you'd like to come there and ask that question, they would be the ones that would have the control over that.
I'm just talking about this property here and what's happening with this property.
Sure, I understand why you're asking.
I'm not trying to deviate out there, but I'm just talking.
But yeah, we're way beyond. Would you like me to get it on the utility commission agenda?
I'll talk to you about it, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions regarding the zoning? Seeing none, could we get a roll call vote, please? I forgot where we are.
Motion carried on roll call seven, zero.
Okay. Item number three is ordinance three dash fifteen. It's a ordinance amending title thirteen by making certain changes to the district regarding Plank Road Parcel five zero zero four nine three zero zero. Is there a motion? This is the Plank Road Parcel. Alderman Better?
I can make a motion. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's time to like make a motion to approve ordinance zero dash three dash fifteen. An ordinance amending title thirteen by making certain changes to the district, Plank Road Parcel, number five dash zero zero four nine three dash zero zero. It's recommended by the planning commission.
There's a motion a second, is there discussion? Alderman Keegan?
Thank you. Um, Director Kyle, who approves a variance? Like you said, the only way that this could be built upon is if there was a variance. What's the process for that?
Um, the process for a variance is that, uh, the person desiring, um, uh, dimensional variance would make application, uh, I believe the application goes to the clerk. The clerk then forwards it to my department and, uh, schedules, uh, hearing before the Board of Appeals. There's notice that's provided to the adjoining property owners. Um, there we have a questionnaire of sorts that the, we ask the applicant to address that it gets at things like the, the purpose of the variance, what are the unique characteristics of the property that support the variance and so forth. So, uh, at the hearing, um, the, uh, neighbors and anyone else who has standing may offer their opinion about the proposed variance. And then the Board of Appeals makes its decision based upon the, uh, contents of the application and the standards that are enumerated, enumerated for variances in the ordinance.
Okay. What are some potential industrial uses of this property?
Well, the I-1 zoning district, uh, it's a heavy zoning, a heavy industrial district. So pretty much any sort of manufacturing, warehousing, um, um, assembly, um, contractors, storage yards, uh, there's, there's quite an array of things that would be permitted by right in that district. And there are other things, uh, beyond that that are permitted as a special use. I think some, there's some, uh, heavy repair, uh, sorts of activities. So it could be, uh, quite an intensive use of the site.
Okay, given the size and the abnormal shape of it, um, what would you speculate would be some commercial uses of it?
Um, well, again, the, with the presence or likely presence of, uh, environmental contamination there, I think there would be a process that would be engaged in by whomever's intending to develop that property with the city to, uh, evaluate the, what kinds of uses the site could support. Um, there, as, as uses kind of go up the scale from industrial to residential, um, there would also likely be more stringent requirements for whatever is done for environmental mitigation on that site. Uh, for instance, having residential use there, whether it be single family or multi-family, would, uh, likely engage a higher level of cleanup than if it were to be, um, a facility that wasn't occupied as a residence. So we could be looking at things like, uh, small-scale office. We could be looking at sort of a, a, a commercial center, not unlike what we have, uh, here at, uh, on Third, near, near Third and Racine. Um, it could be dental office, medical office, um, any, any range of those kinds of uses.
Okay, um, have you heard other concerns from adjoining property owners?
Um, just Ms. Spiegel, she has been the only one I believe that has, uh, had comments about this. Um, just generally, um, the, the property was listed with a real estate broker. I, I don't know, I'm just sort of vaguely guessing at this. I think it was last summer. And, well, there's been inquiries and to one, it's my understanding that they've all been for, uh, storage facilities. Um, so I, I think without us doing anything, um, and the possibility for getting a variance, uh, dimensional variance, that, that would be a fairly likely prospect for that site absent rezoning it.
Okay. And so just to be clear, there's nobody, there's no plan in place right now. There's no party who's got some project in mind. There's, I mean, this is...
We, there is nothing planned or pending.
Okay. All right. Um, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Director Kyle, what is the, the zoning for storage structures?
The, uh, as a principal use, uh, storage facilities are only allowed in our two industrial districts.
Okay. So if this goes to commercial, uh, C, uh, C one or whatever, uh, C two, uh, they can't build the storage units in that area?
Um, that's correct. If the, if there were storage that was incidental to some other, uh, more intensive commercial use, that would be permitted, but it couldn't be the predominant use of the parcel.
Okay. Also, we have, uh, you know, every city has many properties that are, that have contamination issues and, um, certainly, uh, we, we charge them a fair market value of the square footage of the property or whatever. Why, why this property not having, uh, the proper, uh, charge to it for taxes?
I don't know what methodology the assessor used to value the property, so I, I really can't respond to that.
Thank you. Uh, Director Radke, uh, has, uh, this, um, citizen that spoke here said, uh, they cut the grass three times a year. Is, is that in conformance with, with our codes for a property like that?
The code is, uh, anything exceeding eight inches in length? Or if there are noxious weeds on the property? We respond to complaints, it's usually complaint-driven.
Okay, through complaint. Do you have properties, you, you just put on a hot sheet that you know it's going to be not conforming all year and you just keep an eye on them or stay after them or does there?
There are a few, yes. Railroad is one.
Okay. So a property like this could be, I mean, everybody comes out of our facility every day and they're looking right at it. So, uh, when the, the weed commissioner thinks that, uh, it's at a level that, uh, is above eight inches, uh, can that trigger him to, uh, stay on this property?
Sure. I mean, if it's a property that has chronic problems, they're looked at, okay, more frequently.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Zelensky?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, the property across the street from that was industrial and it became the, the storage units. And, uh, I voted against that. I was opposed to that and I lost that battle. I think the corridor to Manasha should not be storage units. I think if we don't change the zoning of this, we're going to see more storage units in the future. I don't want that. I think Manasha missed the mark on this property. This could have been a nice commercial corridor all the way down, down the road, entering our community and we missed the boat on that. And so I think what, uh, the planning commission is trying to do is, is probably the right thing. Is it going to happen in the near future? I doubt it. Cause it's going to take a lot of money, a lot of resources to clean that site up. But I would rather see, um, a dental office or a commercial, uh, building there than some more storage units. So I'll be voting for this.
Alderman Better?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Greg, could you explain the mindset on the C one zoning, such as for directly adjacent to residential properties? Wouldn't it be more appropriate to be a little bit more restrictive? And with the fact that they are directly adjacent to residential properties?
Okay, well, there's, there's a couple of issues with that. Uh, one being, you know, we are on a, the property is abutting a state trunk highway with fairly high traffic volumes. And so in my opinion, it's, it's really would be a, very much a secondary location for like single-family residential. Uh, multi-family perhaps, um, but I'm, I'm not sure if the concern over the intensity of use is, uh, lessened any by going from, uh, uh, like a retail sort of use to a multi-family. In the case of the C one zoning, multi-family is allowed. However, a special use permit is required, which would, as you all know, require a public hearing and, uh, review by the planning commission and approval by the common council. Um, their properties to the east of this location are zoned commercial. Again, there's industrial use that's on the other side of the street, which also argues against, you know, the desirability of that site for a single-family residential use. So I think, you know, those factors taken together sort of... So I think, you know, those factors taken together sort of recommended or suggested to the Plan Commission that a commercial zoning would be appropriate. And also, you know, keep in mind that our zoning standards do require the amenities associated with commercial properties, including landscaping, screening, transitional areas, controls on lighting, controls on signage, and so forth. So I think, I think our codes are pretty solid with regard to providing protections to the adjoining residential properties.
Okay, yeah, I assumed they did C-one because of one-fourteen going through there, but I wasn't sure if a C-two or three might have been possibly an appropriate fit also, but...
Yeah, the, the C-two is, is strictly limited to the downtown, and, you know, there aren't things like, the setbacks are very limited and so forth. So I don't really feel that's appropriate. The C-three and the C-four districts are more intended for, you know, like the campuses, campus-type settings or corridors where we have, you know, an assemblage of properties that are zoned more or less uniformly. And here, you know, applying that just to a single parcel, I don't know, is the best route. And beyond that, you know, the standards aren't dramatically different between those districts. So I, I think just to have that consistency of extending the C-one from the east to the west did make sense.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Inglebert?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna say roughly what Alderman Sevigny said, that as a taxpayer who drives by there a lot, I'd really like to see that property put to some good use, getting it on the tax roll and having some benefit to the city. Just a comment on the five dollars, it doesn't look like the assessor's using any rationale if he's only charging five bucks, but just my opinion. If it's going to be used, I certainly don't want heavy industrial in there. That would be absolutely nothing I'd ever support. So that leaves us with either leaving it, which probably nothing will change, or changing it to C-one, general commercial, hoping we get, you know, something in there that kind of fits in with the community and we can put that land to use. I think it's probably a good idea to rezonate, and at least we get it out of the heavy industrial situation, and perhaps we'd come up with something better than that, so...
Alderman Keegan?
Thank you. First, Director Kyle, could you, for like, our next meeting, get for us what the assessor is using for criteria? I'd just be curious to see that. Listening to everybody else, I'm, I definitely get the not wanting the industrial. I guess I'm, I'm looking at it as an insurance policy as to what can be developed there. And I guess I'm also feeling somewhat comfortable with the idea of needing a variance. I think that's the second level, like, that has to get approved, so...
Any other discussion? Alderman Zalinski?
I'm really confused now. So if we keep it at the current zoning, they'd have to get a variance other than heavy industrial. If they go the other way, there's no variance needed.
There's no variance needed, but if the range of uses, the range of uses that would be more intensive and would have, likely have a more of a negative impact on the neighborhood is expanded under the industrial zoning versus the commercial.
Yes, but they'd have to get a variance if they wanted to downgrade it, which would give the neighbors more input at, at the variance point.
Well, the, the variance, okay, so if a variance is, is requested, the Board of Appeals can either approve it, they can approve it with some conditions or deny it. If they deny it, the applicant may appeal that decision to circuit court, at which time a decision would be made relative to, they would look at the, the record, and, and the determination would be made based upon whether the Board of Appeals properly addressed the variance. We've had, we've had an appeal taken on one property, and in that case, the Board of Appeals lost. So it is within the realm of reason that, you know, that can happen. It's, in, in my opinion...
I'm just looking, if I lived there, what, what chances would I wanna take that it's multifamily or storage buildings? I would really, after looking at the multifamily down the street, I would take the storage buildings.
Well, and I, I would, I would second that. However, our zoning code would not permit those multifamily buildings to be built that have those kinds of building materials, the lack of landscaping, the lack of parking lot landscaping.
One of those buildings isn't very old.
Well, it predated our, our current zoning.
And this was brought forward by administration, it wasn't brought forward by the property owner correctly?
That's correct.
So why are we even, I find it hard to believe that we're even discussing it.
Further discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote please?
Motion carried on, roll call five-two.
Item four is ordinance four-dash-fifteen. Does this one need to, this one would need to stay on the agenda a second time as well? Because it hasn't, oh, it came up. Oh, there was a public hearing, okay. It's an ordinance repealing and recreating title thirteen, chapter one, article F, section thirteen-one-sixty-seven-D-one, and section thirteen-one-sixty-seven-D-four. Requirements by sign type. It's a recommendation of the Plan Commission. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I believe this particular ordinance is out of order.
Because...
Yep. I ask that we hold this for two weeks. A Planning Commission cannot introduce an ordinance, only an alderman or a mayor.
We need a sponsor.
Committee cannot sponsor an ordinance. Only a city councilman or the mayor can introduce an ordinance. I ask that we hold this for two weeks.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, a second, it's held.
Find a sponsor.
It's in the code stand.
It's held. Item, oh, I need to turn the mic back on. Item five is R-eight-fifteen, final resolution authorizing public improvements and levying special assessments against benefited properties. Is there a motion?
Mayor?
Alderman Sevigny?
Thank you. I'm for the adoption of, oh, now I lost my, thank you, Alderman Taylor, for our resolution, R-eight-fifteen.
If there's a motion, a second, is there discussion? Stan, did you have discussion? Any other discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote please?
Motion carried on, roll call seven-zero.
Item N is public comments on any matter listed on the agenda. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak at this time? Seeing no one, do we have a motion to recess to the Administration Committee and Board of Public Works? Is a motion a second? You're too late, Kevin. We, we are at recess, thank you.